Inspired me to do the pageant. And now I'm a senior at USC studying business with a minor in communications. And I'll be graduating in the spring. Um, as Miss LA Chinatown, we do a lot of events to serve and represent the Chinatown community. We help sell raffle tickets to sell funds, for example, for the Chinatown Service Center Gala. Or we sometimes will speak to kids at elementary schools, um, like Castle Elementary School in Chinatown. Um, we also help pick up trash with the Lincoln Heights Tutorial Program. These are just a few examples of things that we do. Um, and one that I'm really excited for is this upcoming Saturday. I will be co-seeing the Chinese Club of San Marino's Mid-Autumn Festival Gala. Um, and again, I just want to thank the Board of Education for this recognition. It's really so meaningful to come back home and be recognized by the community that I grew up in. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nina, and I love, love, love your crown. Beautiful.
One more or one minute?
Actually, I'm very jealous. Go back over to President Chang.
Well, thank you so much for you represent for the San Marino community. You know, this year you became the, the queen. I think it's very meaningful to me. As you know, I'm the chairman of board for Chinatown Service Center. Yeah, uh, before the last week, yeah. And I see, you know, the, our alumni, our students from the San Marino High School. They always have excellent, you know, the performance and present to the community. As you know, the, the Miss Chinatown, the, the duty, they always helping for underserved community. I think that between the San Marino community and underserved community, I think we, we need to connect each other. I think for our board education goal, you, you know, we want every student always have a global, you know, the citizen. So that mean that we take care every corner from the San Marino community to entire the Los Angeles. Yeah. So thank you so much for your presentation for the San Marino and for your family. Any board member like to share the comment? Share your line?
Say one thing, yeah. Um, just so you know, when I Google you, right, to write this lovely thing about you, it does come up that you have, you have an internship with JPL and NASA. So I think this just goes to show, right? So I think they blended you with your brother's resume because if you Google yourself, you'll see that it says that, so. But it looks like you're an all-around player, right? Have a very robust resume.
Well, maybe just check to see, you know, maybe because your parents might like the favorite child. I don't know who was talking about. So I, yeah, you have to be careful with that. Anyways, um, on behalf of the school board, on behalf of our, um, uh, cabinet, Dr. Delatory and myself, I just want to congratulate you. It's been wonderful seeing you in action. We saw her in, um, was it Mid-Autumn Festival? Where were we?
Next week.
Oh, no, no, where, where?
Saw her at Lunar New Year.
Lunar New Year.
Lunar, yeah.
At Lacy Park.
Yeah, yeah.
She, no, she was there and then her parents were absent. They were, yeah, on vacation. Don't you remember? That was, so that was Chinatown Service Center.
Oh, that's our Chinatown Service Center.
Yeah, where I was sitting in the back.
No, 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 that's, that's.
Anyways, I was just playing. Um, congratulations again. It was, um, just wonderful you representing our community. And congratulations on, well, I guess you're almost graduating from SC, right? Yeah. All right. So good job.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, of course. You want everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, of course. Of course.
Yeah, 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 we're coming.
No, no, I don't think you can get everyone in. Just let them do it, you know? I don't think we can get, just get your group.
Just Linda and Justin. Joseph, you go. Yeah.
You go.
Joseph, you go.
Yeah. What's the path?
Let's get out of the way.
Well, you're in the way, right? I'm not. I'm in the way.
I like to photobomb them.
I don't know.
Want to photobomb them.
I know you.
I don't think so. We're not going, but we just don't want any photographs. Oh, wait, 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 my heart, my heart.
Everybody.
I know that he's got an internship now instead of taking the L.
Rochelle, those shoes are so cute.
You know what? Went me. She wants Shohei Ohtani in the cold. He said, I need a grease up. Can't do it.
They can just, their presentation, that's it. Yeah, right?
I mean, I'm pretty creative.
Oh, my gosh, hi. So much. Oh, thank you so much. She was so amazing on my, this is, hey, this is Emily's dad. We were so impressed with her. Yes, she's amazing. She's amazing. You should be so proud of that girl. Okay, take care. Nice to see you.
Bye.
Yeah.
He, his son has known her since kindergarten.
Wow.
I thought his son was the.
Okay, uh, let's go back to the meeting. Uh, eight, uh, public comment. The Board of Education has adopted Board Policy nine three two three B to ensure the public's right to be heard in any matter pertaining to the San Marino Unified School District. Person who wish to provide a public comment will have a three option to submit a public comment. First, submit through a online form. Did we have any submission via the online forum?
Submissions today.
Thank you. Second, request to speak during the meeting via the room. Mr. Hong, please post the meeting for one minutes to collect the public comment.
We're having some trouble with the Zoom link, so we don't have any members on the Zoom link, but we are live streamed.
Okay, thank you. Third, request to speak during the meeting in person via the public comment card. Do we have any submission via the public comment card?
We have no cards this evening.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, President Chang. I was wondering, um, Clark, if, do we need to post something? So if they do want to come in, they can call it in or whatever. Do you have some of the ability? Because I don't want where there a technical difficulty and someone's trying to, um, call in.
Yeah, sounds a good idea. Yeah.
I posted a YouTube livestream link and yes, good idea. I'll update and put a dollar.
Yeah, just let them know they can just call in if they want to speak. Thank you. And you can draw us to, um, our attention for that wherever they come in because it may not be aligned with the agenda. I just want to make sure that people have all the access.
Okay, next, nine, public hearing. I'd like to turn it over to the Dr. Stephen Choi to conduct the public hearing on the AB one, one, two, zero, zero, public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, President Chang. Um, the San Marino Unified School District is now holding a public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six AB twelve hundred report disclosure for the San Marino Teachers Association and management administrative confidential and unrepresented salary employees. This hearing is in compliance with the California Government Code Section three, five, four, seven dot five, Education Code Section four, two, one, four, two, and the criterion standards adopted by the State Board of Education. If you would like to make a request to speak on this topic, uh, please go ahead and submit a public comment card. Or, um, I guess, um, if those that are dialing in, um, can also, um, make a, um, press the raise hand icon or dial star nine, I believe. Do we have any cards at this moment?
This time.
I posted a phone number on the website link if anybody would like to dial in.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this moment, do we need to wait for one minute to see the any?
No, I, I think at this time, if there are no cards, um, and there are no dial-in, um, individuals at this time, uh, we can go ahead and proceed, uh, with the meeting. Uh, but should, uh, any individuals from the public decide to come in later and wish to speak on this, we can open it up again.
Okay, so with that, uh, I, I just like to, uh, kanku for, uh, tonight, a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, ten, consent section. Do I have a motion to approve the consent section from the ten A to ten O?
I move to approve consent section ten A through O.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Local, Mr. Song.
Aye.
Mrs. Lam.
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan.
Aye.
Mrs. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Chen, aye, and the Stephen Paul member book. Motion carry. Motion approved. Eleven, Communication Section A, Communication from the Board of Education. We ask each board member take no more than the three minutes to share their communication stuff from Mr. Song.
Thank you, President Chang. Thank you, everybody being here, and I'm sorry that everybody's here, you know, with the thottest game. And though I, I get a chance to take the last MIG Master of Governance Class Five finally.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's, um, the one thing I learned from the old master classes, I took it, you know? I'm the one who's actually relaxing there because they talk about the finance and they say, oh, we have a school budget problem. I like, we have Dr. Choi and they have labor negotiation. We have like a doctor laws, you know? And they have a, you know, parks, they can give the, the, the AI and Dr. Lenna is making our school performance always better. And a lot while other districts struggling with the leading performance and everything like that. And they start to ask me, who's your superintendent? I'm not going to tell you. Don't even try, you know? So it, it was really amazed the how good our districts are, you know? And it's, it's almost like, I almost have feel like we don't have challenges, you know? It's just so almost perfect kind of things. And it was kind of easy for me to get in because I'm a new and start the learning process. And I really, really appreciate this board and everybody. And thank you again. And I get a chance to go to HMS Breakfast. It was amazing. And thank you so much for the nicer, nice event. And that, that's my communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Mrs. Lam.
Thank you. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Carver Parent Party, which was very, very fun and really, um, exciting, especially when it came to auction time. Um, Dr. Delatory and Dr. Richter knows that when it came to the very coveted parking spaces, um, we had, uh, bidders bidding all the way up to eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand times two. So, um, it was very, that was just one of the very small moments that were very exciting. Um, I'm very grateful that I got to attend, um, and also would like to thank PTA for putting that all together. Um, such a great turnout, so many parents, educators, principal Caldwell. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Mrs. Ryan.
Thank you, President Chang. Also attended, um, the San Marino Schools Foundation with Dr. Delatory and Dr. Choi and Mr. Chang. Uh, Dr. Delatory, Francesca, Mrs. Gill and I presented on the bond update, as well as Dr. Choi presented on our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, parents and the foundation were able to ask questions and understand school budget and finance a little better. Uh, the PTA, uh, presentations were held at each of the school sites. So thank you, Dr. Choi, for, um, your campaign out there to really educate the community on budget. Thank you, Dr. Delatory. And then, um, we also had, um, on the twenty-first, San Marino City Club, uh, the, uh, went to the Huntington to hear Randy Schulman, who gave us kind of like three things that we didn't know about the Huntington, and that was very well attended. Um, and they, of course, always are great in terms of innovation. And they talked a little bit about their scholars' housing, as well as some challenges they have with theft at the Huntington. So, um, that's a little surprising that people are out stealing plants. But, um, I understand, you know, people need, I would, you know, check Lauren's garden because Lauren, Lauren's been talking about those succulents a lot. So, um, I did mention that to Randy, just so he knows. Um, uh, the Huntington VIP Breakfast, uh, I know that Joshua was there. Uh, Mr. Chang was there. I did have to supervise, uh, Mr. Gill and Mr. Webb a little bit. They were, um, their pancake sizes were of different proportion. So I was a little concerned about that. There was no quality control, but I took care of that. I went up there and I supervised a little bit. Yeah. So, and I just said, where is Francesca? And he just said you were off playing tennis or something. That's what he said. That's what he said. So anyways, had a, a great, um, couple of events out in the community. So thank you. Did I take more than three minutes? Why is Mr. Chang all this?
Special for you.
Had three minutes. They all had three minutes.
Give you my minute.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Francesca.
Okay, next, uh, Mrs. Gill.
Special for Shelley, why?
Let's see that you can, you may give you another couple of minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, thank you, um, Mr. Chang.
Yeah.
Um, I did want to congratulate Joshua for his, uh, Masters in Government completion. Um, I know that when you first become a board member, it can seem very overwhelming and there's just a lot to learn. And, um, even just thinking about going to all of those trainings can seem overwhelming. But I do think it's a really worthwhile experience and, um, really helped to make each of us more effective board members and then board as a whole. So, uh, thank you for finishing that on the behalf of the rest of the board. Um, this past week, I attended the District Safety Committee meeting led by Dr. Rose. Um, this is where everybody from all the top admin and PTA presidents, community representatives, the police, the fire chief. Um, we get together and we have a coordinated safety, um, response plan. We give each other updates and it's really just so valuable to have that information freely shared. And Dr. Rose, thank you. You did a great job running it.
Thank you.
Um, I went to the Valentine PTA and I witnessed firsthand Dr. Choi's, um, presentation on the budget. And that was really great. I love how you broke everything down, really understandable, um, way of relating the information. So thank you. I think that was really important to, uh, the parents of the district to understand what that, what three hundred page budget is that we have. Um, so anyway, everyone, I hope you have a safe and happy Halloween and thank you.
Thank you. And next, um, my, my turn. Okay. Uh, first of all, October fifteen, I attend the Huntington Middle School Choir, uh, concert. So I always enjoy, uh, to, to listen because you can see the, they divide to three level. And the first one, they, they start just graduate from the, uh, ed- elementary school. And, uh, and, and the highest level, they are ready to go to high school. So you can see the, uh, from the six to, uh, to eight student. And they, they have a big change during the three year. So that, that's, I think that's the reward I have. Yeah. See the, the kid, the growing. Uh, next, uh, October twenty, uh, on behalf of, uh, Board of Education, uh, I and Dr. Delatory, we went to Carver, uh, School, uh, Library. So, uh, there is a reading room in memory of, uh, Sandy Morris, uh, for the thirty, thirty year, uh, library service, including the, uh, Carver and also Public Library, so the thirty year. So that, that's, that's the big, uh, dedication. I, I still need to catch up, yeah. Uh, so, uh, the day, uh, is very meaningful. So I see a lot of the guests and that also, uh, I, I work with them uh, in the last, uh, two decade, yeah. The volunteer and the school teacher are always there to honor for Sandy Morris. I think that's the good move, uh, for the, uh, Carver School. And lastly, uh, a couple days ago, and you know, the, uh, uh, with, uh, Dr. Delatory coordination, uh, I, uh, present my summer idea. Because, uh, you, you know, the, even, uh, we approve for the bond, uh, two hundred million. But, but right now, two hundred million already can do too much. So, so then I, I come out some idea, see the, i- is a sum of project if we need to repair. Or maybe we can have a naming oppo- opportunity. So then, but I also try not to let the, the, this idea compete with a regular, uh, uh, school foundation donor. So this will be approached to some of, uh, community people. They are willing to be the donor. Uh, they are interesting about the academic, uh, project. So it's, this is another, uh, just, we just talked, it's another mature, uh, project. I see the, uh, between, uh, the school district and the, uh, school foundation, uh, executive. Uh, we can, uh, have a brainstorming, see the what we can come out, uh, to present the community, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, for taking the lead on that. Thank you, Dela, Dr. Delatory, for, um, also leading in that discussion. Thank you.
And, oh, Joseph, uh, if I may, I forgot to mention, um, to thank Hunter Chang for being here.
Okay.
Um, and how wonderful the trunk or treat, um, event was and how many of our students benefited from that. So thank you. And as a fellow liaison with the city, we look forward to meeting again soon and talking about more city-school district partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you for mentioning about the trunk tree because I think this is also one of the most meaningful, the event. Since I have a five-month grandkid, so then I, I, we also bring the kid, uh, grandkid to there, yeah. Take a lot of picture. So they, they know the, they, uh, her the first year have a this kind of experience. Yeah, thank you. I, I, I know the lot of young, uh, parent, yeah. They are very, uh, enjoy about this. Yeah, yeah.
Great event.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next, communication from the Stephen Paul member.
Thank you. Over the past two weeks, San Antonio School has been buzzing with activity and student involvement. Um, the highlight of this period would be our coronation dance, which we held at the Pasadena Hilton. Uh, that was Alice in Wonderland themed. Uh, we also honored our homecoming court, uh, as well as the next week followed our Rentering Week, which observed across all San Antonio campuses that promoted awareness about healthy choices and drug prevention, themed activities, informational campaigns and student-led initiatives. These events showcased this, showcased the school's communities, community's strong sense of spirit, creativity and commitment to student wellness, making an exciting, exciting and meaningful time for everyone in San Antonio High School. In addition to these events, various clubs have begun fall projects and arts and academic teams are preparing for our upcoming showcase. What we have.
Thank you. Okay, and next, uh, see communication from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Chang, members of the Board of Education Executive Team. Um, it has been very, very busy time for those of us in administration, as I'm sure my principals can attest to. Um, we have lots of things going on. I attended the Huntington Breakfast and I will say it was very unique this year with their theme being, uh, the Fox and the Furious and having sort of a little mini show, uh, on the brass area, which was really incredible. And, um, Annie Tang, who was one of the co-chairs for this, um, event, was speaking this morning at, um, the PTA meeting about the fact that, you know, someone, one of our parents brought like this eight hundred thousand dollar car. Um, and, and most of the, the cars, with the exception of three, uh, cars that were provided by Russ Knack, were, you know, just brought in by our parents. We had a DeLorean there. Um, there was a Tesla that was a, a police car or sheriff's car. I'm not sure which. Um, and it, it was just really amazing. And I thought, oh, my goodness, you know, Mr. Weiss is going to find out that this is competing. This is my. Not going to like that one bit, but it was really amazing. And I think, um, you know, it was fun had by all. Everyone who was there was just really energized and, uh, it was a great community event and get together. And also want to, um, just say that, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but she announced that they, they grossed like eighty-five thousand dollars. Is that accurate? Uh, just from that one event for Huntington Middle School, which is really, um, quite impressive. And so, um, I just think a lot about the amount of time that our parents and our volunteers spend supporting our schools and our students. And, and what an incredible gift that is in San Marino because not every school district has this level of involvement. Uh, and, and the talent that our parents bring to the table and share their expertise is just really incredible. And, um, so, uh, amazing. And we should all be very grateful. I know I am, and I know, uh, our board certainly is. But, um, that was fun. And then on Saturday evening, I was very, uh, appreciative that I was invited by some of our high school students to attend a school, um, it's a, it's school youth organization that is California, I believe California-wide, um, where students get together and they talk about topics of importance. And they get into groups and they come up with a initiative or a leadership project that they want to pitch to a school district or to a school site principal, um, in order to implement a program that's really going to help, um, the students with a challenge. And one of the, the groups that got together was talking about how peer pressure, um, impacts drug use amongst teenagers. Another, uh, issue was, you know, um, cyberbullying and just, you know, what happens, um, the impact of cyberbullying and, and student, you know, students feeling overwhelmed and burdened um, with their workload and depression and that kind of thing, which seems to be, you know, pretty universal right now amongst high schools in terms of the, the, the students' perspectives. So they would get up and do their presentations and, and there was a panel, um, of, of people who would provide them with feedback. And so I served on that panel. I was the only superintendent. The other members were board members. Um, so I got to chat with them and, and get their perspectives on their school districts. It was really interesting and, and a fun experience and I enjoyed it. Um, so that was really a great opportunity, I think, for me to, to hear from other kids. So, that was really a great opportunity, I think, for me to hear from other kids from other high schools. And just know that, you know, some of the issues that we face and our kids are facing are, you know, not just unique to San Marino. They're everywhere. And yesterday, Dr. Richter and I attended a meeting for the First District PTA for superintendents and administrators. And the topic was, interestingly enough, all about, you know, dealing with bias and dealing with, you know, bullying and that kind of behavior, just inappropriate comments that are made in a variety of different areas that can hurt our students' feelings, you know, impact their morale, their self-esteem, and just, you know, strategies that can be used to address those behaviors. And as administrators, as leaders, we need to be upstanders and not bystanders. And you're one or the other, right? So, if you're listening to a conversation where things are being said that are hurtful or inappropriate, either sexist, racist, you know, homophobic bias in any way, and, and you have, you know, people around you, you need to decide whether you're going to be a bystander or an upstander. And in public education, what we want, right, is to make sure that every child on our campus feels safe. And so, we need to learn those strategies to be able to intervene and address the situation as promptly as possible. We used to have a program called Safe School Ambassadors, where they would come to our middle school campus, and they would teach our students strategies to be upstanders, not bystanders, but they were strategies that kept those students safe, did not put them in harm's way when they were either interrupting inappropriate comments or redirecting or saying, hey, you know, that's not, that's not nice, or that's going to hurt somebody's feelings. And so, I think we just need to really pay attention to those things and focus on them. And I know we are doing those things in some of our social emotional learning lessons and things like that, like Second Step, and we have some wonderful programs at every school. But as leaders, we also need to model that behavior. And so, that's something that we're going to be talking about a little bit more as we move forward and really emphasizing and, you know, reassuring everyone that we are following those practices. So, it was a busy, busy week. And it's only Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Yeah. More to share? Thank you. Okay, let's go to the 12 information item, 12A, Measure M update. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Choi to update the board on the progress and the current standing of Measure M.
Thank you, President Chang, members of the Board, Executive Team, and Student Board Member Burke. We continue to make steady progress on our major and early impact projects, along with important behind-the-scenes work supporting our facilities program. It has been refreshing, especially over the past few weeks, to see how much facilities and the construction industry have evolved with the integration of technology. For example, our bidding process is now largely digital through our new online platform. And later this week, we'll be conducting 3D scanning of interior and exterior spaces to support design and planning. It is encouraging to see how these modernized approaches will lead to greater efficiency and improved project outcomes. To highlight some other exciting areas of our bond program, I'd like to turn it over to CJ Nolan to provide a more detailed update and some next steps that will be coming.
Thank you, Dr. Choi. Good evening, President Chang, members of the Board, Superintendent Delatorre. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a brief update on our major project progress, our early impact work, and some upcoming contract procurement milestones. Starting with our major Phase 1 projects, which include the new two-story classroom building at Valentine Elementary School, the new TK and kindergarten classrooms at Carver Elementary School, and the medical arts building modernization at San Marino High School, we're advancing through the design process. The geotechnical investigation, site survey, and underground site utility, underground utility detection contracts are on tonight's agenda for board approval. And we've continued gathering as built, as built and record drawings for each of the sites, while locating title reports to confirm existing easements during design. And we're finalizing our site assessments and preliminary site plans for each campus. Our design teams have been meeting weekly, and we're now establishing that foundation for user group engagement going forward. Questionnaires have been distributed to each of the sites to encourage user group feedback prior to us meeting with them. And those meetings are scheduled over the next few weeks, with the furthest out being the high school in November 17. On the early impact projects, as Dr. Choi mentioned, we've implemented the PQBID's pre-qualification system. This, this system is now live on the district's website and is available for contractors to submit their qualifications and become pre-qualified to take part in our Measure M projects. And I would really encourage anyone listening to take part in that pre-qualification process. With that, with that being said, having PQBID's implemented allows us to start, start bidding out some of our smaller early impact bid packages. The first two projects that will be available this week are the concessions restroom refresh and the auditorium fencing both at the high school. These projects will be available on PQBID, on PQBID, and will be advertising to our, to our established cup list as well for contractor bids. Furthermore, all of our playgrounds across the district have been walked, and we're starting to receive proposals from our different playground manufacturers. We expect to have received the final proposal by the end of this week. And from there, we'll, we'll review with district leadership and site administrators as we move forward. We also plan to bring forward the agreement for the synthetic turf and track resurfacing to the board at the next board meeting in November. And in, in addition, we've requested design proposals for the HVAC installation for, at both gymnasiums at the high school. This project had a preliminary estimate of approximately $3.7 million. And we're going to start collecting those proposals, so we're ready to move forward if the board wishes. This week, we're also meeting with our roofing manufacturer to establish priorities amongst our very, very poor our roofs that were labeled very poor. If you remember earlier this summer, we did a district-wide roof assessment. And right now, we're, we're taking all the roofs that were identified as very poor condition, needing replacement within one to two years. And we're prioritizing and triaging those roofs so that we could get the majority, if not all of them, done by the end of the summer. So, if there's some, say, classroom port that are, classrooms that are in portable buildings that might be used as storage during this time, we would like to take advantage of our upcoming winter breaks, spring breaks, and everything up until summer. Where during summer is where we will get the majority of that work done. But if there's work that we can get ahead, we would like to schedule that now. And lastly, our upcoming and current RFQs and agenda items. We've currently advertised for Sequo compliance consultants. That is available on the district's website right now, and we posted an ad in the local paper for, for responses, and we will, we will be wrapping that up towards the end of November, end of November. The second item I have as an upcoming RFQ is our contractor, contractor lease-leaseback process. So, we will be presenting at the November board meeting, the criteria for those general contractors for board approval. This criteria has to be established prior to soliciting qualifications from contractors. And with that, it will be available for board approval and review prior to the next board meeting. Overall, we're making steady progress on all fronts, and I'm available for any questions.
Any question?
No, just some comments or maybe a request. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chang, for always having updates on the bond for us, so we can be kept apprised. I would, I would venture to say some of our parents, as they start to have questions about things that are starting to happen, we should probably like maybe present some pictures or some stages. I know that last year, we had, or a couple of years ago, when we did the Barth Athletic Complex, we had someone do slow-mo where we, or speed, a speed, I think it was speed, where we could time-lapse, where we could see all the things being moved or built and stuff, and it was really a nice collage of pictures for our parents to see, the stages. And no, I love the fact that, you know, you're presenting stuff, but some of our community members are, you know, they want to see things, they want to see, you know, figures, numbers, and all that. So, it'd be great if you could present some of that, just so that it's out there in the community, and they can talk about it.
So, I'd like Dr. Choi to speak to that, because he has, along with Rochelle, have already started some of that work, so I'd like him just to
Yeah, that is, that request is completely part of our strategy. Our strategy is to provide not just textual information, but ultimately provide a lot more audiovisual. That's also one of the key responsibilities of our Public Information Officer. And I believe as we, as we proceed on a lot of these projects with the design process, we'll have a lot more to show, and we'll certainly provide more of that.
Do you want to talk about the website and the alerts?
So, we, we certainly have a latest updates webpage on our Measure M, but it is mostly text updates right now. There are some slides on there that show, for example, our tier-one projects are, are Phase 1 and Phase 2. So, there are some visuals on there, but as we proceed and then we start developing designs and, and a lot more visuals will be presented, for sure.
Yeah, because I, I know as you are gathering information from the community and you're doing surveys, it'd be great to put some of the survey answers up, just so that the community is well-informed, right?
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more comment? If not, let's go to the 12B, 2024 to 25 state CAPS assessment data. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Nina Richter to present this data to the Board of Education.
Thank you, President Chang, members of the Board, Student Board Member Burke, Superintendent Dr. Delatorre, and Executive Cabinet. This evening, I am pleased to provide you with an overview of the 2025 CASP assessment data for the San Marino Unified School District. On October 9, the State of California released the 2425 California Assessment of Student Progress, excuse me, Student Performance and Progress, also known as the CASP, summary reports showcasing student achievement across California school districts. Tonight's presentation will spotlight an overview of the CASP data, highlighting district performance data and next steps for continued growth. Year after year, San Marino Unified's CASP data underscores the outstanding commitment to excellence and steadfast efforts. Our students, teachers, staff, community, and our Board of Education remain steadfast and committed to academic success for all students. Staff is extremely pleased to share that after review of the 25, 2025 CASP assessment data of over 1,000 public school districts in the state of California, San Marino continues to rank among the highest achieving school districts. Specifically for 2025, the San Marino School District ranks as the number-one unified school district in California as measured by the 2025 CASP in the area of math. San Marino Unified continues to demonstrate top-tiered performance ahead of its neighboring districts in the area of ELA and math, earning highest performance scores in grades 3 and 5 for ELA, and in grade 6 and 8 in math, and the highest scores in science statewide demonstrated in grade 5. We are very proud of the continued growth of our students. This continued growth is a testament to our highly qualified teachers who continue to remain or maintain an unwavering commitment to the success of their students, and our students and families who remain committed to excellence. Based on the 2025 CASP data, we continue to see strong performance in English Language Arts and Math. On this slide, we see that 86% of students tested, met, or exceeded standards in English Language Arts, and 85% of students tested, met, or exceeded standards in the area of math. What continues to be impressive is that when we look at the colored bands on this chart, did not meet, nearly met, met, or exceeded, the greatest percentage of our students show exceeding standards. Here, as shown in the blue band, we see 60% for ELA and 65% in math. Directly next to each chart, we also see data comparisons with a few other districts that we often compare ourselves to. Lastly, at the bottom, we see California performance data for ELA and math, the very bottom on the left. San Marino continues to perform well above not only neighboring and local school districts, but also significantly above California overall. Here, we see data disaggregated by the percentage of students who met or exceeded grade-level standards in ELA. Again, observing impressive percentages of students meeting and/or exceeding grade-level standards across all grade levels. Once again, taking note the difference between the percentage of students who met and the percentage of students who exceeded, which is significantly higher. And that's noticed by the blue band and the red band. And then the yellow represents both met and/or exceeded. This slide shows the same data for math with the percentage of students who met or exceeded grade-level standards, again demonstrating strong progress across all grade levels. Once again, observed here in math as well, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards show a larger percentage of students by grade level and district-wide fall in the exceeded column. This is shown in red here when we compare it to the blue column representing the students who met standards. So, that's a nice discrepancy that we want to continue to see. This slide shows the student outcome data for the 2025 California Science Test, also referred to as the CAST. For 2025, 74% of all students in grades 5, 8, 11, and 12 met or exceeded standards in science. On the right side of this slide, we also see comparisons from previous years. You may also see and wonder why this year 11th and 12th grade students were tested. In years past, the CAST was administered to students only in grade 12. Although the CAST must be administered during high school, districts may select which grade level to assess. Last year, collaboration between high school administrators and teachers and the Educational Services Department, the decision was made to administer the CAST to students in grade 11. This is why here on this chart, we see data for both 11th and 12th graders, giving last year's juniors the opportunity to take the test. These last few slides showcase how San Marino ranks among, among the highest when compared to some districts we often compare ourselves to or are often compared to. Here, we see data for ELA. The light blue bottom half of each bar represents the percentage that met or exceeded standards in 2024, with the darker blue bar representing the percentage met or exceeded in 2025. And as we can see by this chart, San Marino ranks at the top when compared to other school districts. On this slide, we see the same data for math. And once again, we can see that San Marino ranks among the top tier, specifically ranked number one in math when compared to other school districts. So, we're very pleased to see this data. This final slide shows 2025 district CAST or science data in comparison to these same districts. And when compared to the same district, here, San Marino demonstrates, demonstrates to outperform all but one district. This data clearly shows that science is an area that we continue to grow in. Now that the state has released the 25, 2025 state data, our work once again begins. The work in developing robust and relevant actionable next steps is already underway at each of our amazing school sites. Our teachers, our staff, and our administrators, since before school started, have been actively engaged in reviewing and triangulating available data metrics, identifying supports and scaffolds that promote student learning. Similar to each year, staff is working collaboratively to develop action plans, scorecards, all that support and promotes school content and grade-level performance. District-wide, Focus continues to prioritize on data inquiry cycles, partnerships with Focus Schools, Focus continues to prioritize on data inquiry cycles, partnerships with focus schools. Consulting partners and instructional walkthroughs this year three times each year. And a strengthened focus on small group differentiated instruction to personalize learning for all students. Through this work, the San Marino Unified subscribes to the P D C A model of continuous improvement. That is actively analyzing data, developing goals and strategies. Continuously monitoring results in recalibrating as needed to ensure our efforts are effective in meeting the needs of students. And making progress towards set goals. And lastly, this slide highlights a comprehensive list, but not an exhaustive list. Of actions to strengthen the district's focus on promoting individual student progress. This list includes some of these programs and initiatives that should be very familiar to all. Data focused professional learning days, use of multiple measures. Facilitation of data driven school scorecards, instructional rounds, also known as learning walks. Formative assessments and interventions, tutoring structures. Tiered academic instruction, which is also another word for multi-tiered systems of support. Development and implementation of site action plans. PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports, restorative practices. And the alignment of LCAP goals and actions to board priorities. These are just a few of the strategies and initiatives we are doing this year. We're extremely pleased to see that San Marino remains at the top one percent of public school districts. Contradicting recent reports that show that student achievement across reading, math and science continue to show. Uh troubling declines nationwide. We're extremely proud of the work our teachers, staff and administrators are engaging in on a daily basis. Alongside our exceptional students and families to provide the highest quality instructional programs our students deserve. This concludes my presentation tonight, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question, comment? Okay.
I have a question. I noticed that there was um a parent square that went out recently about tutor dot com still being um offered to our students. Um, has the engagement from last year stayed steady or what's the action like for that?
So that is something that we are closely monitoring. Early in the year, um. The engagement remained relatively similar to the beginning of the twenty twenty four school year. Um, now that we have entered into, I would say what month three, our um engagement or participation is kind of stagnant. So that's why we're sending out constant reminders through Parentsware, through the school's weekly newsletters. Um, emails to make sure that our parents are aware of this wonderful cost free opportunity. That our students can take advantage of twenty four seven across a variety of different subject areas. And so um tutor dot com sends us a monthly usage report, which is wonderful, and that's something that we do share with our principals as well. Thank you.
Any more comment? If not, thank you, Dr. Richter. Okay, let's go to the thirteen action item. Thirteen A, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Stephen Choi to present the AB one two zero zero. Public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement for the San Marino Teachers Association, SMTA.
Thank you, President Chang, members of the board, executive team. As required by AB twelve hundred, California Public School Districts must publicly disclose the fiscal provisions of all new or amended collective bargaining agreements upon ratification. This process promotes transparency and fiscal accountability, ensuring our district's continued financial stability and commitment. To providing high quality educational opportunities. Items thirteen A and B on tonight's agenda are action items related to these AB twelve hundred disclosures. So item thirteen A is the public disclosure for SMTA. This report outlines the fiscal impact of the negotiated agreement. Uh, which includes a two point three percent ongoing salary schedule increase. And a one time three percent off schedule payment for unit members employed by the district honor before September first, two thousand twenty five. This disclosure has also been reviewed by the Los Angeles County Office of Education to ensure the district maintains the required reserves for the duration of the agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the AB twelve hundred disclosure for the SMTA agreement.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? To the AB one two zero zero public disclosure of a collective bargaining agreement for the San Marino Teacher Association?
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, local, Mr. Song.
Aye.
Mrs. Lam.
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan.
Aye.
Mrs. Gear.
Aye.
Mr. Chen, I and a Steven Ball member book.
Aye.
Motion carry. Next, uh thirteen B. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Stephen Choi again to present the AB one two zero zero public disclosure of. Collective bargaining agreement for management, administrative, confidential. And unrepresented salary employee.
Thank you, President Chang. Item thirteen B uh is the AB twelve hundred for management, administrative, confidential and unrepresented salary employees. Similar to the previous item, this disclosure outlines the fiscal impact of the compensation adjustments on the district. The LA County Office of Education has reviewed the disclosure and confirmed that the district can continue to meet the required reserve levels. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the AB twelve hundred disclosure for management, administrative, confidential and unrepresented salary employees.
Any question? If not, I would like to have a motion. To the AB one two zero zero public disclosure of a collective bargaining agreement for the management. Administrative, confidential and unrepresented uh salary employee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Local, Mr. Song.
Aye.
Mrs. Lam.
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan.
Aye.
Mrs. Gear.
Aye.
Mr. Chen, I and a Steven Ball member book. Motion carry. Thank you. Next, uh thirteen C, approval of amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement. I would like to turn in over to uh our assistant superintendent in charge of for human resource. Dr. Jason Rose to present the approval of amendment to the superintendent employment agreement.
Alright, thank you, President Chang. Uh, Board of Education, tonight. Uh, the board is to consider the recommended approval of an amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement. Uh, Government Code Section five four nine five three requires the board, prior to taking final action, to provide an oral summary of a recommendation for approval on the salary. Salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. So therefore, I am happy to, on behalf of the board, to provide an oral summary of the amendment that is being recommended this evening. If approved, the superintendent's current annual salary will increase by two point three percent retroactive to July first of two thousand twenty five. In addition, the superintendent will receive a one time payment in the amount of three percent of her annual salary. This will come uh before the two point three is applied, just like all of the other bargaining agreements with our bargaining members. The remainder of the superintendent's employment agreement shall remain unchanged and in effect, except as otherwise lawfully amended. Uh, the proposed salary increase and one time payment are consistent with the increases and payments to the other. Unrepresented employee groups, including management, confidential and supervisory employees for the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six school year. And so I turn it back to you, President Chang, uh for a motion.
Okay, um. Uh, with this agenda, what I like to say, you know, the. Uh, each year we do the evaluation on the superintendent. And this year, Dr. Dirator, they get a very uh. Uh positive and wonderful the performance, but uh we we did not have any the increase. So until now, you know, the uh school district, uh they have a negotiation with a union. So for the number one, for the. Uh, yeah, the number one and the number two, last everyone uh uh equally get the increase. So right now, uh, we 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 like to add uh this privilege uh benefit uh to the superintendent. Then that's the purpose for tonight. So anyone have a comment?
I do. Um, I think um, I wanted to thank Dr. Dela Torre. I know that this. Um, you know, it's a token of how we feel about your job performance and actually district wide, how we are our employees that we do. Despite the additional um. Expenditures, unexpected expenditures that come up, we value our employees, we value you, we value our cabinet and um so thank you. I know the the job does not end when you leave this building. Um, I know you guys all have. Probably this on your mind all night long and starts again every day. Um, I do support this. Um, but I wanted to get a clarity. I know you said it doesn't apply until um. The the three percent applies to basically last year's salary. So her the salary on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Correct.
Um, but the way that that's written, it says three percent of her twenty five, twenty six annual salary.
So right now, her twenty five, twenty six salary is in essence, what, twenty four, twenty five rolls over?
Got it, okay, okay.
So it would be on that, then she would in essence get a new twenty five, twenty six salary.
Just want everyone to be super clear.
Yes.
Um, the other, the other. And I just, can I say one more thing? I just think um, you know, when you got your stellar performance review, you didn't ask for more money. And it just shows what a great leader you are. You roll up your sleeves, you get in the trenches and you don't hold yourself above your cabinet. And um, I think sort of what Nino was saying earlier, or I'm sorry, Danica was saying earlier, you know. T uh leadership isn't just who speaks the loudest, it's who gets involved and who um leads by example. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I also mention that the AB twelve hundred report in the narrative section. Um, which includes the superintendent's salary because it is inclusive of. All management, administrative, confidential and unrepresented does have the language that says effective July twenty first, two point three percent. Ongoing increase to the salary schedule, also one time off schedule payment in the amount of three percent. Of the employees twenty five, twenty six placement on the salary schedule prior to the two point three ongoing increase for unit members. Who started working in the district on before September first, two thousand twenty five. So the AB twelve hundred is very specific. My contract is also very specific in that I'm only entitled to receive the same. Increase as uh any other uh management or unrepresented employee. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, but thank you um so much for your kind words. Um, both Joseph and um President Chang and Vice President Gil, I I really appreciate your leadership. And your support of um not only me, but my executive team. It means an awful lot. Um, and I'm proud to work for this board. So thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve on that.
Oh, okay, I I just want to uh one one more time. So since you mentioned about the the number two. So is is that there is a better wording? So then when then. The third party to read, they they think they can totally catch up or. But we want to stay with this wording.
Being on the AB twelve hundred is very specific and it does say uh prior to.
Mm hmm.
Um, the two point three ongoing, and that's what the accounting department is going to look at and use in addition to my uh my contract. Um, my contract doesn't allow me to receive a benefit that is richer than. Um, the bargaining units or the other unrepresented administrative salaries. So. If anyone wants to see the calculation after it's done to make sure it balances to the old salary, they're more than welcome to do that. I mean, this can be audited uh very easily. Uh, my contract is the public record. Any member of the public who would like to see it is more than welcome. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, we're going to be posting my salary on the website for full transparency and I'm completely comfortable with with doing that on a salary schedule.
Okay, any more comment? If not, uh, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent employment agreement?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Local, Mr. Song.
Aye.
Mrs. Lam.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Ryan.
Aye.
Mrs. Gear.
Aye.
Mr. Chen, I and a Steven Ball member book. Thank you. Motion carry.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, the last one before adjourned, the fourteen board superintendent discussion items. An- any uh discussion item? Okay.
Uh, can I just say that it's going to get increasingly um more busy as we, you know, make our way to the holiday season? Um, and we only have one board meeting in November and one board meeting in December. So. Um, just wanted to let everyone know that. And I know that um Mrs. Dela Torre. Has provided the Board of Education with a calendar of all the holiday events that are happening district wide. So there will be lots of opportunities to come out and see our kids performing. Um, all the holiday performances are really a wonderful opportunity just to celebrate what our kids are doing at the schools and and I hope you'll join us for that. Um, but we're super excited about uh the next several weeks into December. That's our week.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. Yeah, thank you for uh Jennifer, you know, prepare for those uh. Uh, information. I think that save our time, yeah, also more efficient, yeah. Okay, anything more? If not, I also want to appreciate the tonight, the three audience. When you approve the agreement, you won't have a the audience there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. And uh at the eight thirty seven PM, I adjourn for today, uh open section.